... Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Campbell.
Yes.
Councilor Ciomo.
Present.
Councilor Asabi George.
Present.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Jackson.
Yes.
Council Lamatina.
Yes.
Council Linehan.
(laughing).
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council O'Malley.
Present.
Council Presley.
Present.
And Council Wu.
Present.
And Council Zakim.
Here.
Madam President, we have everyone in attendance.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite up Council Presley, who will introduce our faith leader for the day. And if everyone could please join us for the invocation standing. After the invocation is delivered, please remain standing, and Council Presley will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Council Presley?
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, everyone. In recent weeks, due to the number of devastating hurricanes that have taken place, we have invited leaders from various immigrant communities to come before the body. Today is no exception. There are some 3,000 Dominicans that live in Massachusetts. And in conversation with many of those leaders, Princess Daru Sedona, Lisa White, Wilma, as well as Elizabeth and Helena, and Pastor Joseph, who'll be joining us shortly, they were just hoping that people, in addition to the great generosity that we have already shown to so many weather refugees, wanted to make sure that we not forget that we are home to 3,000 Dominicans here in Massachusetts. So I want to invite Pastor Joseph up, and I'll share a little bit about him before he offers today's invocation. Pastor Joseph currently serves as an Associate Pastor at Faith Christian Church in Dorchester, Massachusetts. He is also the co-founder and Vice President of Beacon Dental Group (his smile is blinding), where he actively practices as a certified dental hygienist alongside his wife, Dr. Joseph. Please do feel free to patronize them. They are at 1026 Blue Hill Avenue in Dorchester. Again, that's Beacon Dental Group. Pastor Joseph is the spokesperson of Boston for Dominica, a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization based in Boston. It was created in 2015 in response to Tropical Storm Erica to provide assistance to the people of Dominica, particularly after natural disasters. You'll find on your desk, to my council colleagues, further information about how you can be supportive of this effort, and Pastor Joseph will also speak to this momentarily. Although he has made a life for himself here in the U.S., Pastor Joseph's love for his native homeland has never wavered. Memories of his humble beginnings are never far from his heart. It is for this reason that he has joined forces with other Dominicans to help bring much-needed relief to the people of Dominica devastated by Hurricane Maria on September 18, 2017. In light of the recent disastrous hurricane which decimated Dominica, Pastor Joseph was appointed by the Governor of the Commonwealth of Dominica as the official spokesperson for Boston and the rest of Massachusetts. He is happily married to his wife, Dr. Christina Greenaway Joseph, for over 30 years. I understand, we had 25, and she wanted to make sure that was corrected. And they are blessed with three lovely daughters, Dominique, Attira, and Sadia. All right. And without further ado, we'll invite Pastor Joseph up for the invocation.
Thank you so much, Councilor, and thank you so much, you wonderful folks of Boston and Massachusetts. This is the second time that I have the privilege of addressing a wonderful body such as this. It wasn't in this place, but over 20 years ago, we did come to the council seeking your assistance as we were looking to build our dental practice. And you saw the need, and you gracefully gave us your consent. And we are a thriving dental practice in Boston, and we thank you for that. And we hope, even after today, you will wish out with your generosity, as indeed Massachusetts is the spirit of America. So we thank you so much, and we pray that God's blessing will continuously be upon our beautiful state of Massachusetts. So if I don't mind, I could just say a prayer and say, "Father, we thank you for your goodness. We thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. Your love knows no limit. Your grace knows no measure. There is no boundary to your power." We thank you, God, for this wonderful body, these men and women you have put together to run the business of Massachusetts, of Boston. We pray you'll give them wisdom, direction, knowledge, and understanding, that, Lord, there will be equity, there will be love, there will be grace, not only to our state, but throughout the entire world. We thank you for what you have done for our great state, and you continue to just pour your blessing upon us. And indeed, as we are the spirit of America, that love will flow to the Caribbean, to Puerto Rico, to Antigua, to the U.S. Virgin Islands, even to the other states that were affected by other hurricanes, like Florida and Texas. We thank you for even sparing the lives of those people in Ireland where there's a hurricane currently happening. So, Lord, we thank you, and we pray you'll continue to just bless this wonderful body, as this people make laws and regulations that will affect the lives of every one of us. And we ask all of these, in the name of our Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and all the people, say, "Amen." So, as you've heard, Dominica was decimated by Hurricane Maria. Dominica, and I want to make the distinction, is not the Dominican Republic. Dominica is situated between two colonies of the French, two French colonies, Guadeloupe and Martinique. And we are a nation of about 72,000 people. A month ago today, actually, Hurricane Maria visited us, and she came with a fury, not with blessings, but with destruction. We were expecting a Category 2 hurricane, and it came as a Category 5. Can anybody prepare for Category 5 hurricane? Certainly, we were not prepared for it. And so everything that you can imagine that can happen to a force of 165 miles per hour hitting a small island, imagine that happening to us. Every building, every tree, every infrastructure that you can think about was destroyed. In fact, the Secretary General of the United Nations went to Dominica two days ago, three days ago, and he stated his words. "I have never seen any one country deforested in one event as Dominica has been." He said he flew over the country, and if there's any tree standing, there's not one leaf. And so he says, "The usual mechanism of helping our sister and brother nations cannot be utilized this time. We have to bypass every bureaucratic means to help Dominica get back on its feet." The only hospital on the island, the roof was gone. The ICU unit was decimated. People had to be transported to the neighboring islands. Our schools were destroyed. Our bridges were destroyed. I mean, people, I'm a perpetual optimist. I'm a pastor, so I'm supposed to bring hope. So I said to my congregation on Sunday, "At least the people have a sky view. They have no roof, but they have a sky view." So you have to think positively to get out of the chaos and the damage that has been done. But still, people are suffering with PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder. The children cannot go to school. The schools that survive are currently being used as shelters. Our seniors are currently starting to take exams. When we graduate here in Massachusetts, we get a diploma and grade. In the Caribbean, even after you graduate from high school, you have to do another exam to really prove you deserve the diploma. So they're starting for the Caribbean exam. Clearly, they can't do that. They need time, they need help. We are hoping that, having presented to you, you, in your knowledge and your wisdom, can help connect with those schools, with those students. And by the way, the 3,000 or so of us that are in Massachusetts, we left to come here for an education, to come for a better life. And we, you'll find, we are in every institution in Massachusetts. We are at your schools, we are at your hospitals, we are everywhere imaginable. We train the future doctors and future lawyers and future teachers, future dentists and future hygienists. We are a fabric of the nation. And so we're asking you to lend a hand, those people you know who might be able to help us. We, the Boston for Dominica, we just shipped a 40-foot container of supplies to Dominica, emergency needs. We now need to step up to the second phase, which is building materials, generators, stuff that can help with the infrastructure and get us back to a semblance of normalcy. And so we hope you can spread the good news that Dominica needs you. We cannot get back to where we need to go unless we have the international community reaching out for us. So thank you so much for your time. We thank Councilor Anna Presley. She reached out to us. We thank Mr. Tito Jackson, who is the Councilor for District 7. And we just want to thank all of you for your attentiveness, and we hope that you will really take this to heart and reach out in whatever way you can. As she said, we have our information available. I can be reached at Beacon Dental Group. I can be reached at Faith Christian Church. And there are other people that we can reach. Our wonderful, beautiful, and by the way, this is our national wear. We call that the "Wob Duet." And by the way, Dominica also, we have a French Creole. We speak French, like the Haitians, and people tend to confuse us with Dominican Republic because of that. But if you speak French here, "Creole, n'upale Creole, vale Creole, Alessia." Well, this is our wear, and this is Elise Thomas. And this is my lovely sister, Helena Joseph, and she's part of the team. We have Wilmer over there with the baby. And we have some other people in the audience. I see Wendy over there. If you are from Dominica and you are here, wave your hands. Did I see Mayor Flynn there a while ago? Is that Mayor Flynn back there? Mayor Flynn was the one, over 30 years ago, when we were building our church. He was the mayor of Boston, and he helped us cut the rebund. So I just saw him. I just want to recognize you. (applause) So thank you so very much.
And now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Council Presley, and thank you, Pastor, for reminding us what's truly important, helping those in need and coming together to do that. I want to thank all of us for coming together to be at this council meeting today. We're joined by residents and advocates, and we have a full chamber today, also including family, friends, colleagues, and supporters gathered to help us later in the meeting salute our colleague, Councilor Bill Linehan, for his years of service to the city and to the council. I want to particularly recognize, as recognized earlier, State Representative Nick Collins is here, as well as former mayor of Boston, former ambassador to the Vatican, Ray Flynn. So please, thank you both for joining us. And just so folks have a sense of the meeting, we have a number of items to get through for business and various votes, and then we'll hear from our colleague later on in the meeting towards the end. So we'll begin formal business today with approval of the minutes from last meeting. Are there any changes or amendments? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. And Madam Clerk, if we could begin with communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1321, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an additional amount of $1,500,000 from the Massachusetts Port Authority for the purposes stated in the amendment to the Foundation Grant and the South Boston Foundation Declaration of Trust.
Docket 1321 will be assigned to... Council Linehan, you have the floor.
(laughing) Want to get that last word in? Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask for suspension and passage. This is really the last matter, other than my letter of resignation later on today, that I'll be able to present as a Boston City Councilor. It's a very important matter. It's an accept and expend order similar to the matter that Council Lamatina brought forward last week to have suspended and passed. This particular matter will provide $150,000 to the South Boston community in mitigation for the impact of port-related activities and its expansion over 10 years. A local board will be instituted to direct these resources to youth, to sports, to recreation, and open space initiatives and programs. I want to thank Tom Glenn in Massport, Mayor Walsh, and Dave Sweeney, my South Boston colleagues, especially Council Flaherty. And a very special thank you to Representative Nick Collins, who's here with us today, for his efforts and dedication on making sure that this matter would be before us here today. So, thank you, Nick. So for me, my last day, my last matter, something sustainable for the district. It's important going forward. Please support this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Linehan. Would anyone else like to comment on this docket? Seeing none at this time, Council Linehan moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1321. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1321 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Madam President, would you like me to lead on 1322?
Both in this section together. Great, thank you.
Docket number 1322, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Justin Sterrett as the Budget Director effective October 10, 2017. And docket number 1323, communication was received from Timothy J. Smith, Esquire Executive Officer, regarding the election of Michael W. McLaughlin and Michael D. O'Reilly as trustees of the Boston Retirement Board commencing October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2020.
Dockets number 1322 and 1323 will be placed on file. Reports of committees.
Docket number 1200, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on September 13, 2017, docket number 1200. An ordinance regarding the right to charge submits a report recommending the docket ought to pass in a new draft as a home rule petition.
Chair recognizes Council Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This man was sponsored by our Council President, Michelle Wu, the committee. On September 13 of 2017, this proposal seeks to codify the rights and responsibilities residents in Boston who install electric vehicle charging stations on their residential properties, but also bar condo and homeowners associations from banning or unreasonably burdening the owner of an electric vehicle from doing so. The codification includes the electrical vehicle charging station be installed at the owner's expense, the electric vehicle charging be installed by a licensed contractor, an application process for approval by the condo or homeowner association, along with guidelines for fees and rights and responsibilities of ownership. The following individuals offer testimony on behalf of the administration. Vanit Gupta, Director of Policy and Planning for the Boston Transportation Department, and Carl Spektor, Commissioner of Environment Department. Administration officials address concerns raised by the city's Corporation Council that the proposed may exceed local powers because it exempts to govern civil relationships. But public testimony reflected support for the proposal to increase and encourage access to electric vehicles. Lastly, while the original proposal is in an ordinance form, the docket has been changed to a home rule petition to ensure proper jurisdiction and validity. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I'm recommending that this docket ought to pass in a new draft, but at this time, we'll defer it to the lead sponsor, our colleague, City Council President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Chair recognizes Council Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you, Chairman Flaherty. I really want to thank Council Flaherty for expediting this, because this is an issue of concern to constituents in Boston, but also to the larger city as we talk about how to become a leader in environmental sustainability and make sure that our air quality, our public health, is as secured as possible. We know that 30% of emissions that create pollution that affect asthma for our city kids, 30% of that comes from the transportation sector. So we need to be doing everything we can to shift people away from gas-powered cars. Now, that's doing work on infrastructure for the T and for public transportation. That's infrastructure for cycling and walking, but it's also getting people to make the switch to electric vehicles. Up until now, electric vehicles have been very, very expensive, and we've been talking about them as sort of a luxury item. But as the technology gets more developed, we are going to see, in the near term, electric vehicles priced very excessively compared to gas-powered cars. Now, the one barrier, in addition to costs, for people who want to make the switch over to an electric vehicle is where you can keep charged. You're not going to need to go to the gas stations anymore, but you do need to plug in somewhere. And I know the administration is doing a lot of work in terms of public infrastructure, where we can locate chargers. And Council O'Malley has been pushing us, even within City Hall, to do that for his new vehicle. But people need to be able to charge at home as well. And we have a unique situation in Boston where we have a lot of multifamily homes that have been converted to condos. You have condo associations with sometimes just two condo units in there, sometimes three condo units in there, where if one unit owner objects, for whatever reason, any change has to be put on the back burner. This home rule petition seeks not to take away people's property rights, but to make sure that, as we're talking about public health and making the switch to electric vehicles, this is on the table even for those small condo associations, that you can have the conversation about who pays for it, who maintains it, where it should go to be convenient for everyone, but you can't just, as a blanket rule, prohibit it. Several other states and jurisdictions already have this legislation called the right to charge, so we're looking to codify it in Boston. I want to thank the administration for being, for really engaging on this issue. We had a lot of back and forth, not about the need for this, because they've been very committed to expanding infrastructure, but about the legal mechanism. And, you know, I personally still think that this is technically within city power, that we could do this as an ordinance, because, as Council Flaherty mentioned, we don't have the power at the city level to exercise, to pass laws governing civil relationships, except, with a small exception, of when it's in exercise of an incident, independent municipal power, which includes public health and regulating public health. However, rather than trying to establish that right through litigation and encouraging someone to sue the city first to decide it, we'll go the home rule route, as suggested by the mayor and the administration, try to get it done up there. I've already spoken with colleagues at the state level and the chair of our Boston delegation, who feel very optimistic about the chances of passage. If that doesn't work, we'll reserve the right to come back as an ordinance maybe next year. But I feel confident that, with the backing of the council, and the mayor, and our state legislators, that we'll be able to make a big step that some other states have taken, but that will put us before this big wave of, how do we manage when all the electric vehicles become more cost-accessible and then be trying to chase the infrastructure question? Let's do it first, set the rules, and make it easy for everyone to get there. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask for a vote, and also would, if there are no objections, would like to ask for a roll call vote in order to demonstrate fullest possible support to the State House when the time comes.
Thank you, Council Wu. At this time, Chair Flaherty recommends that docket 1200 ought to pass in a new draft as a home rule petition. Do we go right to a roll call, or should we? Okay.
All votes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Doubt the vote.
Madam Clerk, we've doubted the vote. Take that count for us, please.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes, we're here.
(laughing) That was cute. Council Ciomo. Council Ciomo, yes. Council Asabi George.
Yes.
Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, yes. Council Lamatina. Council Lamatina, yes. Council Linehan. Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. And Counsel Zakim. Counsel Zakim, yes.
Mr. Vice President, docket number 1200, receiving the unanimous vote.
Thank you. Docket 1200 has been passed with unanimous vote, and we'll move on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1298, message and order to reduce the FY18 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $3,256,331 to provide funding for the Boston Police Department for the FY18 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Detectives Benevolent Society, I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk, could you read docket 1299 as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 1299, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation for the Boston Police Department for FY18 in the amount of $3,256,331 to cover the FY18 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Detectives Benevolent Society. The terms of the contract are July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, and July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% effective the first pay period of July of each fiscal year. The agreement also includes increases to existing Quinn bill/education benefits, modified cumulative risk benefits beginning on July 2016, and increases to hazardous duty pay beginning in July 2017.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to recognize our chairman. I'm just looking over his shoulder, then wanted to recognize a colleague in government who's here as well, the Register of Deeds, former counselor and former council president, Steve Murphy, is here. Thank you for joining us. And now Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, Mark Ciomo.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee held its hearing on Monday, October 16. We had Jim Williamson, the interim Budget Director, Alexis Kachuk, the Director of Department of Labor Relations, and Deputy Superintendent Stephen Whitman, Boston Police Department. Department. They all testified on behalf of the administration. Our role here is to vote on the supplemental appropriation to fund the FY18 portion of the collective bargaining agreement. The $3,256,331 will come out of the city's collective bargaining reserves. Procedurally speaking, Docket 1299 appropriates the funds, and Docket 1298 moves those funds from collective bargaining reserve for appropriation. Regarding the Police Detective Benevolent Society's collective bargaining agreement, it consists of two consecutive agreements. The first one effective the first pay period of July 2016 through June 2017, and a second one effective the first pay period of July 2017 and June, through June 2020. The base wage increase pattern is as follows: 2% effective July 2016, 2% effective July 2017, 2% effective July 2018, and 2% effective July 2019. Other cost items contained within the contract include gradual increases to the Quinn Bill Education Incentive Plan, establishment of a new cumulative risk enhancement benefit, incremental increases to hazardous duty compensation.
Additional language and policy modifications targeted towards financial savings include
Additional language and policy modifications targeted towards financial savings include clarified language regarding officer shift swaps to limit cost impact, new limits and
clarified language regarding officer shift swaps to limit cost impact, new limits and
clarified circumstances when officers are entitled to court vacation days as a result
clarified circumstances when officers are entitled to court vacation days as a result
of having to appear in court during previously scheduled vacation days, new administrative
of having to appear in court during previously scheduled vacation days, new administrative
efficiencies regarding vacation and holiday start times, and modified department procedures
efficiencies regarding vacation and holiday start times, and modified department procedures
for officers who volunteer to be called in.
for officers who volunteer to be called in.
There are 280 members in the Boston Police Detectives Benevolent Society, and as the
There are 280 members in the Boston Police Detectives Benevolent Society, and as the
chairman, I recommend passage of Docettes 1298 and 1299.
chairman, I recommend passage of Docettes 1298 and 1299.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Thank you, Counsel Siomo. At this time, Counsel Siomo moves for a passage of both dockets. At this time, Counsel Siomo moves for a passage of both dockets. We'll vote one by one unless there are other comments. We'll vote one by one unless there are other comments. We'll start with Docket 1298. We'll start with Docket 1298. All in favor say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The ayes have it. Docket 1299. Docket 1299. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on Docket 1298? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on Docket 1298?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker.
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell.
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson.
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina.
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley.
Yes.
Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, Docket number 1298 received a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Docket 1298 has been passed unanimously. And now onto Docket 1299. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1299 has been passed. We will, could you please call the roll for Docket 1299 as well, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Counsel Campbell, yes.
Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson.
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina.
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley.
Yes.
Counsel Presley, yes.
Counsel Wu. Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem.
Yes.
Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, Docket number 1299 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Docket 1299 has also been passed unanimously. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1324, Counsel Presley offered the following resolution urging the legislature to pass House Bill 3017, an act to preserve affordable housing through a local option tenant's right to purchase.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, I testified before the Joint Committee on Housing at the State House in support of House Bill 3017, an act to preserve affordable housing through a local option tenant's right to purchase. This is a bill drafted and sponsored by Somerville State Representative Denise Provost. I'm going to thank her for championing this important issue. You know, obviously, and I was joined at that hearing by elected officials from throughout the region, because this is a national crisis. I testified in support of this legislation, because I do believe that tenants and residents feel under siege, they are being displaced, this is a public health crisis, because that is truly how I view displacement. It is destabilizing and devastating families and communities, and it certainly has a residual impact on our workforce and our economy. So I'm looking for anything that gives power back to tenants who are feeling powerless, and any best practices that we can replicate here in Boston. I don't think any one city has figured this out, there's no one, you know, one silver bullet for this, but I do believe ultimately this offers us one more tool in our toolbox to stem displacement. I think that this policy change, I think that this policy change, again, which is already proven, will go a long way in stemming displacement. The general premise of this legislation is as follows: When a building has three or more units that is not owner-occupied, is being sold to a third party, the tenants are given an opportunity to match the fair market value for their building and to remain in their home. In this way, the person or LLC selling the property retains the full value that the building would fetch on the open market, but instead of it being sold in the speculative market, it would be owned by the people that are currently renting. Now, there are clear steps that involve hard deadlines for tenants to prove that they can make the financing work so that the seller doesn't lose money. The really exciting piece, that I find really innovative in this, is that nonprofits in the city itself can be appointed as the purchasing agent, which would hold the property in perpetuity, as limited equity affordable housing. This legislation allows for the use of Community Preservation Act funds to be used just in the way that DND Chief Sheila Dillon has been speaking about, preserving existing affordable housing. Now, when we passed the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act, I heard from many of my colleagues a desire to have a concrete way to preserve affordable units, not to simply track displacement. Again, I do not think this is the silver bullet for Boston, but I know we can find ways to use this to further the stated goals of the administration and each and every one of you. I urge my colleagues to sign on, and I will be asking to suspend the rules and adopt this resolution today, so we can add this to the testimony the State House Committee heard yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank my good colleague Counsel Presley for bringing this resolution forward. While I could not be at the hearing yesterday, I was proud to submit written testimony to the Joint Committee in support of this legislation. It's incredibly important, as Counsel Presley so eloquently said, that we are doing everything we can to maintain the fabric of our neighborhoods. I was really proud just last week to be with Mayor Walsh and others and the Fenway Community Development Corporation, celebrating the preservation of over 50 units of affordable housing in that neighborhood, and that was done through a different program, but what happened there was that the Fenway CDC was assigned as the entity that had the right of first refusal on this property, and through a combination of grants from the state, a million dollars from the city's neighborhood housing trust, and other funding sources, the Fenway CDC was able to purchase property that had been privately held, and now in perpetuity, we're going to have 52 units of affordable housing in what is a rapidly changing and a higher-cost neighborhood over time. And that right there is just one example of many, where when we have a nonprofit, or we have tenant co-ops, or tenant-owned, or rather, former tenants, who now are the owners under co-ops, to preserve affordable housing in our city. I think this is important, it's timely. As Counsel Presley said, it fits very well in with what we're trying to do through the Jim Brooks Act, through the ordinance tracking eviction information that Counsel Baker and I have introduced recently. We need to be doing this on all fronts, and I want to thank Representative Provost also for introducing this legislation. I hope the House and Senate act on, I hope Governor Baker will sign it, and I think we need to be doing this, and I certainly think that this city and this council would be well-served to have this local option. I would look forward to working with all of you on passing that once this passes the State House. Please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Zachem's name, please add Counsel O'Malley's name, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Linehan, please add the chair's name. Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counsel Presley for leading the charge on the council on this. I actually did make it to the State House yesterday to testify on this matter. The great part about this is that it's proven. It's been going on since 1980 in Washington, DC, and Washington, DC is a comparable-sized city, and they also have a comparable amount of upward pressure in terms of the real estate. I also like the fact that this is market-based. So one of the pushbacks that we get from those who are in real estate and who are developers, as well as those who own these properties, is are we going to be at a loss? This allows for them to get the same price, but actually brings it back to those who are living there, and gives them equity, but also it stabilizes the market in that it will be affordable. And I believe that this is innovative, it's timely, and it's fair. And I think we need to, again, put in perspective what we're dealing with in the marketplace in the city of Boston. And I want to thank Counsel Asabi George for her work on the new committee on homelessness. When I started as Chair of Education, there were 1,500 homeless students that we knew of in the Boston public schools. Today, there are over 4,000. And so that's an indicator of where we're headed in the city of Boston relative to displacement as well as homelessness. $2,100 is the average one-bedroom in Boston, and this is a substantive, thoughtful way that can actually begin to change the tide. This is also happening at a time when we have tens of thousands of units of expiring use. Expiring use meaning housing that at the end of next year, or the year after, or the year after, will be losing its affordability. And I was recently in the Lower Roxbury area, knocking on some doors, and I walked into some apartments that were losing their affordability. And on the wall, they posted, "A one-bedroom, which is now $1,100, will be $2,200 next year. A three-bedroom, which is now $2,000, will be $4,500 next year." And so that is what we are facing. This is a really thoughtful component. The last piece is that cooperative housing is something that is organic in the city of Boston. We have lots of it, and it has been an important way to stabilize housing. In my district, we have Warren Gardens, and we have St. Joseph's, and these have been facilities and housing that has been able to keep people in their neighborhoods, in their community, and making sure that our city is not homogeneous, and that we have people at every level. Please add my name, and again, I want to thank Counsel Presley for her work on this. And I also want to thank Representative Provost for the great work that she's doing at the State House. This is thoughtful, and it's something that we should move forward on quickly.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Jackson's name, and Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Madam President, please add my name, and through the chair to the maker, I just wanted some clarification with respect to if a nonprofit buys it, are they still going to be required to pay the taxes? And I only say that because we depend on property tax. I can envision a situation where hundreds, if not thousands, of these units would be sold, and I guess creating a situation where we're going to have a tax crunch here. We obviously depend on those tax dollars to pay basic city services, and I just didn't know whether or not that House bill has a provision there by which if a nonprofit comes in and buys that two-family, or that three-family, or that four-family, that they're still required to pay the property tax so that we can pay for city services. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Would the sponsor like to address this?
I just have to make a quick phone call, just to confirm that if...
Okay, great.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty and Counsel Presley. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Flaherty's name? And at this time, Counsel Presley moves for suspension and adoption of Docket 1324. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1324 has been adopted.
Docket number 1325, Counsel Wu and Presley offer the calling of order to promote equity in the Boston contracts.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes Counsel Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I want to thank cosponsor Counsel Presley for all the work she's been doing on this issue since way before I was on the council, and yourself, Mr. Vice President, for convening the hearing that we had held on this last spring. The bottom line is, if we're going to be serious about supporting working families, about really providing economic mobility, we have to not just set policy at the legislative level, but really examine all of our practices and every single action the city is taking as a buyer, as a purchaser, as a participant in the economic market. So this is in the style of the Boston Resident Jobs Policy, in the style of Mayor Walsh's Wage Theft Executive Ordinance. Can we do everything we possibly can by looking at where we're spending our money as a city government? We know from the hearing last spring that in FY16, the total discretionary spending that the city, that City Hall and all of our buildings and employees spend for procurement was more than $379 million, and over $60 million of that was processed through the Purchasing Department. In general, departments procure their own services. We're talking everything from who plows the snow around our community centers, to who cuts the grass on our parks, who does the graphic design for flyers that need to go out for DND, et cetera. This procurement at the department level accounts for about 80% of our spend, and the rest happens through the centralized procurement office, which procures the goods, you know, toilet paper for the bathrooms, or pens that employees use. Altogether, we are putting a lot of money out there into the market, and we need to make sure that every dollar the city of Boston is spending, taxpayer dollars that we're spending, is getting returned and building wealth in our communities. So this ordinance is designed to support and supplement initiatives by the Office of Small Business Procurement, and again, the mayor's executive order on equity and inclusion. The ordinance directs the city to solicit at least one bid from a woman-owned business and one from a minority-owned business for contracts under $25,000, which make up a large portion of what we're spending. This is a concrete way to bring more MWBEs into the pipeline, and in some ways, more importantly, it sets the requirement for regular reporting to the council on progress and to the public, so we can always see what the numbers are and whether we're making progress, truly bringing equity to the city, and again, creating opportunities for families in every neighborhood of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Chair recognizes Counsel Presley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and Chair, and, you know, here we are in 2017, the first hearing order on this matter that I introduced in partnership with Counsel Conley was in 2013, and so I want to just thank Counsel Wu for her leadership and her partnership in picking this up, and her due diligence to get us to an accessible and tangible fix here, and we need to. You know, not only does everyone in the city of Boston deserve to benefit from the prosperity of this great city, but they deserve an equity and opportunity to contribute to the prosperity of this city. And the only way that we can realize that is by ensuring full inclusion and participation in the economy, and contracting and procurement opportunities is certainly one way, one critical way for us to get at that. I do want to thank, again, Counsel Wu for her leadership and her partnership. I want to thank the administration and all the stakeholders who have actively engaged us in this process. I want to thank the administration for putting out a long overdue and much-needed RFP on disparity, but we know that studying the wealth gap, although that will ultimately give us a roadmap out of it, that we, at this time, we really need to be dual-pronged. So we're going to do the study, you know, that will give us a roadmap out and hold us, you know, accountable in other ways, but in the meantime, this is something that we can advance that is tangible and ensures full inclusion and participation in our economy by women and people of color. Boston contracts alone will not close the wealth gap in our city, but it is important that the city lives up to the goals we asked private developers to meet when including people of color and women in wealth-building opportunities. So again, I thank everyone for their partnership in this effort, and I'm excited, you know, that we are on track to addressing these persistent and widening disparities when it comes to procurement and contracting opportunities for women and people of color in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Chair recognizes Counsel Jackson.
These chairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counsel Presley and also Counsel Wu for their consistent work on this matter, and bringing it to the table. We are a city that is over 50% people of color, and I'm going to assume that we're at least 50% women. And so it is pretty sad, and I stand corrected, I said that we spend 2% with people of color-owned businesses in Boston. It's actually under, well under that. I believe it's around .5 of a percentage point. These are all city funds. The people's money. And so we should be thinking about, you know, we are a city that has one of the most pronounced income inequality gaps, but more pronounced is our wealth gap. There's a study called The Color of Wealth, and it states that white families in Boston are worth $247,500. Black families, US-born black families are worth $8. Caribbean families are worth $12,000. Puerto Rican families have a net worth of $3,020, and Dominican families have a net worth of $0 in Boston, in our city, in our time. Those are not my numbers, those are the numbers of the Boston Federal Reserve Bank. And we know that the three areas that we are able to build wealth in our business, inheritance as well as real estate, it is our business to ensure that we are equitably distributing the dollars of the people of the city of Boston. But I do want to note that the administration has been an abject failure in this space. And they have been a failure because their recent, and this is last week, RFP wants[1711.88] to put out a RFP to study whether or not we should have a disparity study. That is unacceptable. It is unacceptable for the businesses that are not getting these contracts right now. It's unacceptable for a city that is a majority of people of color, and it's unacceptable because it's just simply not fair. And that is elected leadership that is not leading and failing to lead. We have seen a model such as this and anchor institutions around the United States that have been transformative. The University of Pennsylvania tracks all of their spend in that city. They spend about $268 million, and they track each one of their department's spend. And they are able to note that the University of Pennsylvania in Philly spends over $20 million with businesses owned by African-Americans and over $10 million with businesses owned by Latinos. That's just one school. We, as a city of Boston, have to step up. The state of Massachusetts, under the leadership of Governor Baker, has actually done two disparity studies. Why is a disparity study important? Because as we're going to track this information, a disparity study actually gives the city the right to have goals, actual goals that would allow us to have an equity office and to look forward to doing business with women, people of color, veterans, and those who are disabled. We need that, and we need it today. We need not drag our feet, and we need not study to study, because those who are broke don't need people to study whether or not or how broke they are. We absolutely need to be able to move forward. I want to thank Counsel Presley and Counsel Wu for their leadership here. This is, shows leadership on the Council, but I hope that the Mayor's administration will follow the leadership that is occurring on this Council. Thank you very much. Madam President, please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Jackson's name? Add Counsel Zachem, add Counsel Baker, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Sabi George, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lamatina, and Counsel McCarthy. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Counsel Presley, as well, for bringing this matter to the table. As Counsel Wu said, I'd like to add my name as well. $370 million going from the city to businesses, which is incredible. Clearly, we want to focus on Boston businesses, but $370 million, we can also focus on Boston people. And I know over the, in the last, you know, couple decades, the City of Boston staff itself has shrunk, whether it's guys who mow lawns and women who mow lawns or shovel. We've lost a lot of people who had city jobs. There's not a lot of city jobs now. And I know that department heads come in, and I used to be on the other end of that table where we used to say, yes, you know, we have plenty of people who do great work, and we do, but the reality is we need more. So I'm looking forward to this hearing, and as we start to utilize that $370 million, I would like to see more jobs created with Boston city people who grew up here, who live here, who could use a great job as well. So I'm looking forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel McCarthy's name. And Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to stand and applaud my colleagues and Counsel Presley for the work she's been doing in this space for a really long time and Counsel Wu joining her efforts. It's always great to see a study, and studies paint, of course, the picture, but what's even better is when you see something that actually will bring about tangible results. This clearly does that. And there's a lot that we can do on the city level. Sometimes we forget that. We often think that oftentimes we have to go through the State House, and we do on many things, but there are a lot of things that this body can do to actually truly have an impact. I love the part, too, about outreach to those women and people of color who have businesses in the City of Boston. We often get calls about work that needs to be done, people looking for women-owned businesses, and those who are people of color who own their businesses and live in the community. But there's no way of tracking them. There's no real concrete up-to-date list. So the fact that the City of Boston can actually maintain such a list and make it not just available for work that the city can give, but make it available for those private contract, private corporations and others in the City of Boston who are looking for talent is, I think, a really great piece of this. So thank you, guys or ladies, for your leadership in this regard. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Campbell's name? And docket 1325 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Oh, could you please add Counsel Linehan's name as well? And we'll put docket 1325 in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1326, Counsel Zachem offered the following order for a hearing regarding the public ways by private corporations.
Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I filed this hearing order earlier this week as a result of sort of a confluence of events over the past few weeks in my neighborhood, around my home in Back Bay, continuing to hear from constituents on this issue as well. There are quite a bit of pressure on parking in our downtown neighborhoods. It's not only in our downtown neighborhoods, obviously a citywide issue, but in Back Bay in particular, we've been subjected to a much higher parking meter rate, three times the rate per hour that people are paying in the rest of the City of Boston for the past year as part of the Performance Parking Pilot Program. We also have regu, lots of construction going on. We have lots of road races and parades and political marches and protests that usually come down Commonwealth Avenue on their way to the mall or in the way to the Boston Common. And we also have movie production companies, including one right now that is filming, I believe, a Denzel Washington movie a few blocks from my home, that has taken, in my estimation, nearly 100 parking spaces out of resident parking and metered parking in, on our city streets, and that have been patrolling them with their own private security officers. This raises a host of concerns for me, both about how we allocate our parking, how we make our decisions, how this movie production began the day after, or on street cleaning day, when already nearly half of the parking spaces in the neighborhood were not available to residents. So I want to talk about this. I want to bring in the relevant city departments, transportation, the Police Department, public work, special events, to think about how we're coordinating our planning on this and what we can do to, where possible, move some of these entities, some of these events, out of this neighborhood. You know, we are thrilled, I think, to host the marathon. Finish line's four blocks from my home. That's great. The Walk for Hunger is great, but over and over again, as more entities and more organizations apply for permits, for road races, for marches, et cetera, we need to think about this holistically. I think people often forget that there are a lot of folks who live here. I got a call just Sunday morning about someone who couldn't get his kid to soccer practice because of a road closure and parking restrictions. So I could go on and on about this. This is obviously a frustration for me personally as a resident, but it's one that I have heard about from day one from my constituents and look forward to having a hearing about this and hopefully coming up with some protocols and opening better lines of communication between the neighborhood and all the involved departments. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Flaherty's name? Please add Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Linehan, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Presley, Counsel Sabi George, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Jackson. Please add the Chair's name. And docket number 1326 will be assigned to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 1327, Counsel Sabi George offered the following order for a hearing regarding elder scamming.
Counsel Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you all. I rise today to call for a hearing order on an issue that I feel strongly about and I think we all feel strongly about. That is the predatory sales practices and scams that target our seniors. At community meetings, neighbors and community service officers warn each other about various companies and individuals that are knocking at their doors. Jamal Crawford, a constituent of ours who has reached out to a number of us about this issue, told me about the savings, about saving his grandmother thousands of dollars when he found out that she had fallen victim to one of these scammers. We all know this is happening, and the time to act is now. Boston is expected to have approximately 125,000 residents age 60 and above by the year 2030. Everyone has the right to age in place, to feel safe in their homes, and to remain in their neighborhoods. Everyone has the right to not be taken advantage of, and our job is to protect them. Commissioner Shea and the Elderly Affairs Commission do great work, and I'd like to support their efforts by raising awareness and leveraging our resources and working with our residents to find solutions that work for them. We know the reality is that our seniors are vulnerable and very vulnerable to these companies and to individuals for a variety of reasons. Maybe their home value has multiplied 20-fold since they purchased it, or maybe they have language barriers or living in social isolation. I believe that with strong partnerships, coordinated outreach, and more resources, we can empower our seniors to avoid these scams. I appreciate the effort of our constituent Jamal Crawford to highlight these serious concerns that he has and elevate it to us. I appreciate the work of the Elderly Affairs Commission and their work to help our seniors age in place. I appreciate my staffer Jessica Rodriguez, who has worked on this hearing order to date, and the work that we will do together. Look forward to an expedited hearing on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sabi George. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the Maker, ask that my name be added. This is a very timely and important discussion that we have to have. I would simply ask that, as the Chair of the relevant committee is inviting folks to testify, that we include some folks from Boston Center for Youth and Families. And I'll tell you why. We've been offering some really, really popular and effective senior online training and classes to make sure that we can close the digital divide that is often exacerbated by age as well. And this has been something that I've heard firsthand from a number of constituents where they've fallen victim to phishing schemes, phishing with a P-H. So I think it's a great initiative. Look forward to working with it, coming up with some safety protocols in place going forward. Please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel O'Malley's name. Please add Counsel Campbell, Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Linehan, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Presley, Counsel Zachem. Please add the Chair's name. And docket number 1327 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. Personnel orders.
Docket number 1328, Counsel Wu for Counsel.
Counsel O'Malley moves for suspension and passage of docket 1328. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1328 has been passed. I am informed by the Clerk that there are two late filed matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Seeing and hearing none, the matters are added. Madam Clerk, if you would please read the first late file.
From the Office of Counsel Bill Linehan, Boston City Counsel, District 2. October 16, 2017. To the Clerk, Dear Clerk Feeny, Effective at the close of business on October 18, 2017, I hereby resign my position as the District 2 City Counselor, so as to retire from the City of Boston with over 30 years of service to the people of Boston. Kindly convey this message to the President of the Boston City Council and fellow members with warm regards, Bill Linehan, Boston City Counsel, District 2.
So on the first late filed matter, characteristically late filed, I would like to invite up the Mayor of Boston, Marty Walsh.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, City Council. And thank you, guests that are here today, for all the business. I have, I requested to come over and just say a couple words about my friend Billy Linehan and thank him, first of all, for his service to the Boston City Council. Thank you, Billy, for what you've done, the agenda that you've been able to push here at the City Council. Four years ago, when I got elected mayor of Boston, I gave my maidens my farewell speech in the House of Representatives. And for me, that day was a sad day, bittersweet day. I was excited about being sworn in as mayor of Boston a couple days after that, but I understood that when I got elected to the House of Representatives, as if many of you, when you got elected, it's the closest you'll ever be to the people, because you go to the civic meetings and you're in people's kitchens, and you're in their living rooms, and you hear about the happiness in their life and you hear about the sadness in their life. And for over 30 years, Billy Linehan, in one shape or form or another, has done that in the communities of South Boston first. And then when he worked for the different administrations, he was working throughout the entire city of Boston. And I have a dear friend of mine from Mission Hill, Kevin Fitzgerald, and he would talk about the days that Billy Linehan and Fitzie, in working on taking the kids from Mission Hill to South Boston, the kids from South Boston to Mission Hill during the times of busting, when the city was being torn apart, and how they were trying to work together to bring those two communities together. That's a story Billy Linehan doesn't talk about. Doesn't talk about that type of work. And it's an honor for me to be here today to thank Billy for his years of service. And we're also joined in this chamber today by, he might have been mentioned already, I'll just introduce him again, former mayor and Ambassador Ray Flynn is here with us. Thank you, Mayor Flynn. State Representative, and Billy's representative, Nick Collins is here. A colleague of Billy's for a long time, and now the registrar, Steve Murphy's here. Just a couple of quick highlights. Billy is a lifelong South Boston resident, served on the City Council since 2007, was elected president of this body, and I have to thank him for his presidency because it was my first year as mayor. And we started a tradition that we've kept on with the current president, to sit down and have meetings, either weekly or biweekly, to talk about the importance of the relationship between the Council and the Mayor's office and how we move our agendas forward, how we move our city forward. I want to thank you, Billy, for that. I want to thank you for your work on economic development and planning in the City Council. I want to thank you for your work on redistricting in the City Council. I want to thank for your work on the South Boston waterfront to make sure that we continue to work to make sure the South Boston waterfront is an area of development that's an inclusive area of our city. Billy was the Director of the Parks Department, in case you didn't know. He was a Special Assistant to the Chief Operating Officer, and he's always been a committed public servant to his community. So Billy, I am here today on behalf of the citizens of the City of Boston to thank you for your service with gratitude and appreciation, wish you good luck in all of your future endeavors. And we have to give you, I want to give you, present you with a Paul Revere Ball on behalf of the entire City of Boston, including all of your colleagues here today, presented to William Linehan on behalf of the citizens of Boston and the Boston City Council and the Mayor's Office with gratitude for many years of dedicated service to our city, October 2017. Thank you, Billy.
Yeah, if our colleagues would come up, we'll take a photo with Phil. Thank you very much, Mayor Walsh, for joining us and helping us celebrate our colleague. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty, for pointing out. We're also joined by Senator Joe Boncorre. Thank you so much. And now, City Councilor, District 2 City Councilor Bill Linehan, you have the floor.
Wow. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the honor and for taking the time out of your very busy schedule to come here and present me with a Paul Revere Ball. I can remember four years ago almost where that same embrace occurred. It was the same day that the mayor became mayor and I became President of the Boston City Council. And having known Marty for 25 years, it was a very special moment, and this is also one of those times. I want to acknowledge that we're in such a beautiful space here today. It wasn't always like this, and I want to congratulate Madam President for this work on behalf of all of us and also for the work that she did, you know, because today is my, is my end to public service. Forty-three years in public service. I had great jobs. I worked with great people. We achieved some truly significant things. And first, I want to say thank you to all of you, every single one of you here, all of you over the years who have supported me in whatever I've done. I want to thank you, my colleagues here on the Council, for the friendship, for the banter, for the debate, for the interaction, and for all the work that we do here on the Council. I want to thank those of my colleagues in the state and federal government who I've worked with. It's an honor to work, to be an elected official, and it's truly an honor to work with all of you who are such formidable elected officials on behalf of the people. I want to thank Ray. He gave me my first. He gave me my first city job here, back in 87. That's right. Sal knows it's 87, because he got one too. And I want to thank the staff, my staff, specifically James and Lisa Lauren, John Mahoney, Jack Kelly, and those that are here from before, Dave Nagel, Elaine, and John Ulrich. They're here. Thank you so much for making me look good every day. And I want to thank the central staff, because when you're president of this body, you get to know and work with each one individually, the central staff. And so I want to thank Julie, you lady, Carrie and Lorraine. I want to make sure I thank Christine and Kate, and Juan, and Ron, and Cora, and Candice, Michelle, and Daisy, because you make every one of us look great. You allow us to be who we are. We wouldn't be here if people didn't work on our behalf, who didn't volunteer or work on a campaign. None of us would be here. They enabled us to be here. And so with my former chief of staff and treasurer of my campaign and sidekicks since high school, I want to recognize Dave Nagel. And then my daughter Kristen, my oldest girl, who led our campaign for the past six or seven years. Kristen. It's hard to believe that it was in September of 1972, I got a state job at UMass Boston. I was a dock worker. Prior to that, the only private sector job I ever had, I was a blue shirt, like the cleaners that are here doing our office at night. It's been a long and fortuitous journey, of which I'm so grateful. Sal said I can cry, but I'm not. He's cried earlier. Only one person has been with me the entire way. While hundreds of people have helped me over the years, she's been there virtually every day. She's my partner. Enabled me to do the work that I do, the fun that I had and have. This Friday, my wife and I celebrate our 45th wedding anniversary. I'm so grateful that, and none of it could have occurred without her. None of it. So Judy, thank you. Thanks for putting up with me. I want to recognize my other children who are here, Brendan and Sean, my identical twin boys, who, I know Sean was here earlier, he might have had to get back to work. And I also want to recognize the baby of the family, Brooke. Is she still here? She had to get back to work, you know? You know, this institution is very important. It's, don't let anyone dismiss the value of this elected body. It's important to the people of Boston. I've had many memorable days in this chamber, getting sworn in 10 years ago by Mayor Marino, debating with many of you on the floor, competing, challenging one another. I remember the fire contract dispute. We were in here for almost two days. And I want to recognize Commissioner Finn for being here today. You know, the day that Mayor Walsh swore me in here, and you elected me to be president. I want to thank all the folks in his administration. So upon reflection, it's important that we each remind ourselves how we got here today, and recognize the people and the efforts that came before us, because that's what we stand on. To all those I've served with in the past, and to all those who served before me, I want to say thank you. And I want to say thank you to Steve Murphy for his presidency and his friendship all those years. And I want to thank the people who taught me the importance of politics at a very young age. I was like 15. And of course, my dad, grandson Anna, who made it all possible. I'm very grateful. My mom said, back in the day, "Bill, when you go somewhere, make sure the place is in better shape than when you first found it." So I hope I do. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, please. Thank you. Is it appropriate now to, okay, it's a council tradition to say goodbye to each member of the sitting council at the time, so, which is rarely the case. I'm going to start with Counselor Zakim. The Z. You know, Counselor Zakim, thank you for your friendship. Thank you for working through things, thanks for always giving me a heads up regardless of what position you had taken on a particular matter. You have a family legacy in the city, and it's a very big one. Your dad was a legend in human rights. You are doing a grand job in trying to move that agenda forward. And at the same time, today, you sounded somewhat like me, worrying about traffic and road races, and so you are growing in the job. And I thank you. I thank you, and goodbye. Only for today. I'm sure I'll be around, you know, to all of you, I say goodbye as a city council. Ayana, thank you for your insight, especially around issues related to women and girls. And as we all know, none of us guys would be anything without the great women in our life. And you clearly have been the most eloquent city counselor during my tenure here on the Boston City Council. You have passion, and you have an ability to relate to all of us when you speak on something. So thank you for that. Thank you so much. Matt, you're the green man. I feel very strongly on energy efficiencies and carbon footprint, but you've taken that mantra from John Conley and taken it to a great place. You have great skills in this business. When you walk, you list a little too much to the left. I'd like to see you a little more centered. Your father said to me, the day that you got sworn in, I had to keep an eye on you. That was not easy. But no, you've done a great job, and you're a true benefit for the council, and I wish you the best. So Timmy, like, I knew him when he was barely a little bit more than a teenager. We worked on the Red Shirt Program together, we worked at Parks together, we worked at DPW, we worked in so many ways. He is, one of the great benefits of this particular body is that people who have worked in the government for 10, 15, 20 years, end up getting elected through their efforts and their commitment to individual citizens, and Tim has done that. So I want to thank Tim for all his friendship. I think he's the only member that golfs on the, right?
You.
Besides me. No, besides me, who golfs. So I think I'll see him somewhere on the golf course, surely not in an election year, but. You're a formidable city counselor, and this body needs you, so thank you. Sal, you're doing good. You haven't cried yet. You know, ditto for Sal on the years of service to the city. This body, and when Sal leaves, it will completely change every single seat in 11 years. And contrary to what people say, the old and the new, and the young, and the, you know, the lefties and the righties and all that sort of stuff, it changes by itself based on the work and the needs and the intentions of the members and the people who want to get elected. And it's going to change dramatically next time, all for the better. Because the people know. You don't get elected and reelected if the people don't know. So Sal, you've been a dear friend, and I was going to call you my goomba, but I'm going to save that for Siomo. Sal, transportation, me at Parks, we've worked with each other for 30 years. I hope we continue to work together when we leave here, and I think we will. So.
Thank you, brother.
Tito Jackson. Tito, you have a great way of advocating for those people who really don't get a voice. And that's needed all the time, so that when we sit up here at City on a Hill, we think about how we got here. And I think that you represent your district in a very unique way, advocating for not only the people of the district, but the people like those. And I enjoyed your company many times. First time I met Tito was when he ran for city council at large, and we had a dance off. I won. Thank you. Yeah, no, it was an Irish dance. Motown, that's right. Thank you for that. That was a great moment. We went to the Motown show on Washington Street at the old Paramount, right? And Diana Ross, the woman who was playing her, which we had here in the City Council, just happened to invite me up to sing a song with her. So it was a great moment. Thank you, Tito, for that. Michael Flaherty, my first foray into politics was in like 66, if you can believe that. None of you were born, or maybe Siomo was, but. I know Murphy was, but. Counselor Flaherty, I've known him since conception, if you can believe that. His mother was pregnant with him in his father's second campaign. And I've watched him develop over the years. His dad was a close friend. He inspired me. And Counselor Flaherty's done an extraordinary job of being someone who's looking out for the entire city and its well-being. He's had a leadership role as president, and he used it well on behalf of the citizens of Boston. He has a, will have a continued long career in politics, and I want to thank him and his family, his dad, and his deceased mom for all their friendship and support. Thank you, Michael. Anisa, she was the head of the Civic Association when I first met her, and she'd be barking at me about not doing this and not doing that. We opened up her yarn shop on Dorchester Avenue, ribbon cutting. And she was one of the mistresses of the Polish triangle, and made sure that people paid attention, you know? And they did. It's great to have a teacher on the Boston City Council, and I lay off on you all of this stuff on addiction, and hope that you and Counselor Baker will continue to work for those people who struggle in our city, in our Commonwealth, and in our nation every single day, and all of us who struggle with them. Thank you. My goomba. I say this just to tick Sal off, no. They're sidekicks, they're dear friends of mine. We've spent meatloaf specials together. That's an inside joke. Mark has been the starwood of the Boston City Council for virtually my entire tenure as the Chair of Ways and Means. He's watched the nickels, the dimes, the pennies, and the billions. And he's done an extraordinary job, makes each and one of our lives easier by all the work that he does in those three months leading up to the budget. So thank you, Mark. Andrea, I can honestly say you're a breath of fresh air. You have an extraordinary potential here in the city of Boston as an elected leader, and I see you as a great district city councilor. And that, you know, I know there's the at-large, and there's the district, but it's kind of a little group within the group, and district city councillors have a certain place, and Matapan and Dorchester will do very well with you as their leader, and I hope that lasts as long as you want it to. Thank you. And Frank, I remember in the print shop, I'd go over there and say, "Got to get this printed," whether it was for this mayor, that mayor, or this department or that mayor. That was before either one of us were elected. You inspired me by your effort during your campaign to knock on every door in Dorchester, so people would give you a chance. As I said, the voter never fails, in the end, they pick the right person. You just were in front of every single one of them, so they would get to know that. When you speak in this body, which isn't that often, everybody listens. So thank you for your friendship, your support as a counselor, and your family's support over the years. Before I go to the President, Madam Clerk, you were my president, you were my first president. Thank you so much. Thank you for everything you did. Alex, thank you for what you guys do every day. And the clerk's a very busy place that nobody really knows about unless they need it. And Ellen, I hope you're not writing everything I'm saying down there. But thank you. Thank you all. And Michelle, you know, I truly take pride in your being elected as president in this party, and I do, and your leadership since being elected. It is, it's one thing to be an Irish Catholic guy from Southie to get elected to the council and then to president. There's been a bunch of them before that. But there have been few women, and there's been no Asians, and you are that. So your work, you have a great career in this business, please keep it up, and thank you for your service and your leadership. Is that enough? No, thank you very much. Thank each and every one of you for all you've done for me over the years. I'm very proud, my family's proud, and I will see you again, I know that, somewhere somehow. All right? Thank you.
And the first late filed matter will be placed on file. So if any colleagues wish to address our colleague here, we'll do that at the end in the closing statement section. We do have another late file. Madam Clerk, if you could please read that into the record.
Second late file offered by councils Josh Zakim and Matt O'Malley. In the city of Boston, resolution requesting adequate deliberation regarding National Grid's proposed new natural gas pipeline. Whereas, the Boston City Council is exploring strategies to reduce the carbon footprint of municipal buildings in of municipal buildings in order to uphold the city's role in reaching Boston's climate readiness goals, save the city and taxpayers in maintenance and energy costs, and create a healthier environment. Whereas, little to no information has been made available to the public concerning National Grid's pipeline proposal, and local residents and elected officials discovered within days of the scheduled meeting that a petition concerning this proposal is set to be considered by the city's Public Improvements Commission on October 19th, 2017. Therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council hereby requests that the Public Improvements Commission refrain from affecting any binding decision on National Grid's Back Bay, South End pipeline proposal until the public has had the opportunity to review the materials that the company has presented to the city, and until the city, I'm sorry, until the city council has had the opportunity to deliberate the consistency of the proposal with the city's climate commitments and make an informed recommendation to the Public Improvements Commission filed on October 18th, 2017.
Councillor Zakeham, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Councillor O'Malley for partnering with me on this. For many of the advocates on this issue have spoken to me, and I think to many of you, about this proposed pipeline, I also want to thank them for still being here and holding their signs. Your hands must be getting tired, it's not every day that we have a colleague retiring. And it's, I appreciate, I appreciate your support and your efforts and your advocacy, not just on this pipeline, but on issues around climate and energy and the environment in the city and across the country. You know, I first heard about this proposed pipeline through parts of my district some months back, and was concerned, and met with many of the advocates here, met with some of my neighborhood association folks and others, and realized, decided this was not a very good idea. And I know you, Madam President, joined us on a march along the proposed route of the pipeline to draw attention to it and to oppose it. And one of the issues here is just that, that there's not been enough attention around this issue. This is a major addition to the non-renewable energy infrastructure in the city of Boston. And if we're going to be so, you know, if we want to be so bold, and we want to be talking about how we can be better, how we can be greener, how we can be planning for the future, we need to start right now, and we need to talk about what kind of infrastructure we're building and what we're going to support here in the city of Boston moving forward. I think we need to have a real public discussion about this, we need to be talking with the relevant different city agencies, including the BPDA, on how they're approving buildings and what infrastructure that's supporting. We need to make sure that the people in our neighborhoods know what's happening here. And I certainly think the Public Improvements Commission, the PIC, is going to do their due diligence, but I hope that they will give us the opportunity to do ours as well and to make sure that residents' concerns are heard. We, you know, talking about, we heard about the devastation in Dominica earlier from hurricanes and from climate change, and that's happening around the world right now and in this country. And we need to act. The time is now, as Councillor O'Malley, I'm sure he'll say in a second, so I don't want to steal it, but it is on cities and towns and states to do this work, and we have an opportunity here, I think, through planning and through our regulatory powers to do that. I look forward to working with my colleagues, with the mayor's administration, with the PIC, and with the environmental advocates here on moving forward constructively and making sure that our city and our community and our world is protected. I'm going to also ask this, we suspend and adopt this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zakeham. Councillor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the occasion last night to speak at a healthcare forum in Jamaica Plain with John McDonough, who many of you remember was a legendary state representative from JP in the 80s into the 90s. He then went on to run Healthcare for All, he then was sent at the late Senator Kennedy's lead in the Help Committee in terms of crafting what eventually became the ACA or Obamacare, and was asked about what he'd like to see in the threat of healthcare. He quoted Sam Gompers. Samuel Gompers was the former, the founder of the AFAVEL about a century ago, and after organizing labor, a reporter said, "Mr. Gompers, what do you want? What does organized labor want?" And Gompers said, "More. I want more." And when it comes to sound environmental policy and initiatives and leadership by people like Josh Zakeham, that's what we want, we want more. And this is a great opportunity for this body to not only continue talking about these issues and shining light on these important issues, but actually doing the work. On April 29th, 2015, this body, virtually everybody, it was passed unanimously, there are some new members since it was done, passed a resolution that I authored in support of a study examining current conditions of the West Roxbury neighborhood impacted by the Algonquin Incremental Market Pipeline Project. Many of the individuals here have been steadfast advocates and defenders of our neighborhood on that very, very issue. It was a relatively simple resolution, but profound, and it talked about that there are some real public health risks, some real public safety risks, some real infrastructure that we needed to get addressed before these decisions were made. Sadly, FERC, our appeal fell on deaf ears, FERC went ahead anyway. It should be noted that many of us, and certainly the delegation and many community members, have appealed that decision in federal court, and it just so happens that tomorrow will be, that will be heard before the first Court of Appeals in Washington, DC. I mention that to say, this is happening again. You've got a utility, utility, it should be noted, that is suing the city after our action of passing a gas leaks bill in December, that is obfuscating a public process, and they're not taking into account the concerns, the questions, the due diligence that all of us do and any decision that we make. And the fact of the matter is, is that we need not be focused on growing fossil fuels and relying on fossil fuels, but really looking at renewable energy and what that can be. That is, that's the ticket, not only to increasing environmental health, but creating new jobs, to making sure the community choice aggregation that we passed two weeks ago is seen to fruition, to make sure that the B C E C that I've been working with many folks, many of you and many folks in the audience, that we're able to get that done. That is what the focus should be. This is just another example of the utilities coming in, enforcing something that we don't necessarily need. That's another thing that's really, we need to discover before we go forward. The Attorney General has said that we have enough, we have enough of the natural gas, we don't need to be building more infrastructure. The utility companies that stand to make billions are saying that's not the case. I tend to side with the Attorney General in this case. So let's have a fair, public vetting of all these questions, let's make sure that our neighbors, particularly in Back Bay, have an opportunity to have their voices heard, and let's stand together. Thank you, Councillor Zakeham, for your leadership, you and I partnered on this, we've walked with Mothers Out Front along the Commonwealth Avenue, promenade on the coldest day of the year. And you mentioned this, and I wanted to mention this as well, Pastor Joseph gave a beautiful invocation at the beginning, at the invitation of Councillor Presley, and was painting a picture about the utter devastation that was caused by Hurricane Maria one month ago today. And that was the third category, it was five, Cat 5 when it hit Dominica, but it was Category 4 when it hit the United States. That was our third Category 4 hurricane that hit the United States in one month. Before this year, we had never had two hit in the same calendar year. That is astounding, and is a direct result of what is happening with our reliance on fossil fuels and carbon and creating these weather events. We have to act. Thank you, Councillor Zakeham, for your leadership on this, look forward to passing it, and hopefully the PIC will heed our advice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor O'Malley. Councillor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to thank Councillor Zakeham and O'Malley for putting this forward. I also want to thank Mothers Out Front and others who have stood steadfast in this space. I want to quote JFK, and he said that "Our most basic, common link is that we all inhabit the planet, we all breathe the same air, and we all cherish our children's future, and we are all mortal." Ladies and gentlemen, we have community choice energy that dragged, that they didn't want us to move forward on. We have gas leaks that are older than Matt and Michelle, that this company owns. But yet, we want to expedite this new fossil fuel pipeline to bring heat to luxury condos. What are we doing? We need to be very thoughtful and move very cautiously when it comes to this. I agree with Councillor O'Malley, I agree with our Attorney General. I don't believe that this is actually needed at this time. I'm told that part of this actually goes through my district also. And again, why move with all speed when it comes to something that they want, but when it was something that we knew that was going to help the city of Boston? And to deal with the weather events that are coming, we are a coastal city, there's no doubt that weather events are coming in our direction, and we must do our part in our time to stand up to these large interests. So again, I look forward to having a hearing, and I actually, we should be speaking directly to the PIC. Don't move. Don't move on this. As a council, and I hope we speak with one voice on this, this should come before the council. And by the way, honestly, this is why planning and development should be separated in our city, because we should be planning for this type of infrastructure, we should not be surprised by a huge pipeline going down one of our main streets in the city of Boston. Please add my name, but I, again, to the PIC, I would say, as a duly-elected official, it is incumbent upon you to hit the brakes, to stop, and allow this to come before the elected body of the city of Boston prior to moving forward on it. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councillor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Councillor Jackson's name, please add Councillor Linehan's name, Councillor McCarthy, Councillor Presley, Councillor Lamatina, Councillor Savi George, Councillor Siomo, Councillor Campbell, please add the chair's name, please add Councillor Flaherty. And at this time, Councillor Zakeham moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of the second late file. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and this... Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the second late file?
Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Baker, yes. Councillor Campbell.
Yes.
Councillor Campbell, yes. Councillor Siomo.
Yes.
Councillor Siomo, yes. Councillor Savi George.
Yes.
Councillor Savi George, yes. Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Jackson.
Yes.
Councillor Jackson, yes. Councillor Lamatina.
Yes.
Councillor Lamatina, yes. Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan, yes. Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy, yes. Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley, yes. Councillor Presley.
Yes.
Councillor Presley, yes. Councillor Wu.
Yes.
Councillor Wu, yes. And Councillor Zakeham.
Yes.
Councillor Zakeham, yes. Madam President, the second late file has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The second late file has been adopted with unanimous vote. I am informed by the clerk at this point that there are five late filed matters for the... Oh, it was adopted. Suspended and adopted. Okay. Informed by the clerk that there are five late filed matters for the consent agenda, which will be added in absence of objection. Seeing and hearing none, the matters are added, and Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, consent agenda is adopted. Are there any, anyone wishing to pull a matter from the green sheets? Councillor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Don't get up yet, Sal. I'm just teasing, I'm totally teasing, you can get up. Yes, Madam Clerk, I'd like to pull docket number 1271, page 2 of 10.
Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 1271 into the record?
Page 2 of 10, City of Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, docket number 1271, sponsored by the mayor. Message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $120,000 in the form of a grant for the Love Your Block Initiative. The initiative funding comes from various donors to be administered by Neighborhood Services. The grant will fund a mini-grant program for neighborhood beautification projects. It was referred to committee on September 28th, 2017.
Councillor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It's very straightforward. The $120,000 will be used for beautification projects that our neighborhood and civic associations can apply for to beautify our city, and as we enter the fall time period, it'd be nice to have this passed now, so we can prepare for the spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. At this time, Councillor McCarthy moves for passage of docket 1271. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and docket 1271 has been passed. Okay, any other matters from the green sheets? Seeing and hearing none, we will move to, for any statements from the group. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on a matter other than salutations for our colleague? No. Okay, and Bill actually ran up here and asked me to ask you all to be brief in your comments because he wants to get us to lunch. Okay, so I'm going to try to do it in the order that I see folks. Councillor Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted earlier to get up and rise and so, to make a motion to decline his resignation. Excuse me, I have a bad cold. But I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate you, Bill, and to your wife. 30 years working together as a city, thank the mayor for giving us this opportunity to serve the great people of this city. You have made my life so much better since you joined the council 10 years ago. It's funny, being from East Boston and South Boston, in the 70s, we were supposed to hate each other, and they were Irish, and we were Italians, but we became really, really close and good friends. You serve your people well. You could go here, leave here today knowing that South Boston, your district, is a better place because of the work that you did in this body. So thank you and congratulations. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councillor Lamatina. Councillor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Billy, I just want to thank you for being my friend. We probably grew up similar, large families, music, fighting, all that stuff. Ray gave me my job in 86, so there you go. I want to thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you... He was my mayor. I want to thank you, I want to thank you for always being straight to me and for me. Just recently, I had a matter that was in front of me, and it was really sticky, and probably talked to 100 people on it. You gave me the best advice, bar none, the best advice. I didn't even tell you that, I'm telling you that now. Thank you for that. And during redistricting, I want to thank you for giving me South Hampton Street, too, so.
Thank you, Councillor Baker. Councillor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Bill, what can I say, other than it's been, it's been an honor to be your colleague. We haven't always agreed on everything, but when we disagreed, we would both passionately make our points, and then we'd shake hands. And we disagreed without ever being disagreeable, which unfortunately is a rarity in this business more and more. There was a great moment that I really appreciated with you, which I don't even know if you remember this, but it was probably my first month on the council, when there was the Vertex groundbreaking right down the street. And I was your vice-chair of Economic Development and Planning, I went down, you went down, another colleague who shall remain nameless went down, and he left early, and he was your ride, so I drove you home. And I drove you back here, you know, it's a mile down the road. But from that, you know, you gave me a master class on the South Boston waterfront. First, you made sure that I said it that way, the South Boston waterfront, and just talked about development, what you had seen, and I really appreciated that. I appreciated so much just your perspective on things and what you had achieved and what you had hoped to achieve, that I went the long way back. I pretended that I missed the exit back to the hall, because I just wanted to have more time to learn more from you. So, really appreciate everything to you and to Judy and your incredible family. Enjoy this retirement. I know we'll see a lot of you in the years ahead, and all the best, Bill.
Thank you, Councillor O'Malley. Councillor Campbell, you have the floor.
I told you not to cry, I'm like, I might cry. I just wanted to say thank you. You know, born and raised in the city of Boston, with a father who was born and raised in the city of Boston, you know, there's a history in this city. And it reminds me of something that my father used to always sort of say to us, which is, you always take a person as they present to you, not by what you hear in the media or from other folks. In the short period on the council I've gotten to know you, and to value your friendship, but also your ability to bring people together. People don't often see that side of you, maybe publicly, but I learned a great deal in partnering on some of the work with you, including, you know, stuff related to public safety. I admire you, I've learned a lot from you. I've learned a lot from you. I will miss you and your institutional knowledge. I also appreciated when I presented on issues related to criminal justice that you got personal with some of that stuff and really made it clear to everyone that these issues affect everybody, regardless of the neighborhood you're from, regardless of your race, your gender. And I appreciated that, too. I know I'll stay in touch with you. I'm looking forward to the lunch. The family is taken care of, the baby is taken care of, so thank you for setting this up. It'll be my first outing, but congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your service. Thank you to your family. It really does take a family effort to do this work. It's not easy work. Someone told me, you know, welcome to the arena, but thank you for not making it feel like an arena. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you. I also got my first job from Ray Flynn in 1987. Youth outreach worker at the Jackson Man. Look what you did to me, Ray. All kidding aside, that's funny how a lot of us are... So Bill, you're making it official after today. I'll be the oldest on this body now. And when I came in, almost 10 years ago, I was in the middle of the pack, so thanks a lot. You know, I'll never forget your election. We didn't know each other. It was March, I think, '07, special election. And I remember watching you getting elected, didn't know you, but saw the incident with your son and just my heart and my wife were like beside ourselves because we saw the happiness, your family, you, and then the tragedy. Thank God your son is fine and you've gone on to finish out a great public service career. And I just want to thank you because when I came here, I think like many of us, it's like, what the hell did I do? You know, the awesome responsibility that you feel in this job and the support you need from your wives, your spouse, your children. Judy, he married up. But I did too. But you know, just your friendship, your support, this is not goodbye, it's see you around. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Counselor Zake, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor, thank you for your friendship. You know, it's only been, I guess, four years now really since we got to first meet when I came on this body. Your guidance as president in my first term, let's say, line myself somewhat with Matt's comments. We did not always see eye to eye on every issue, but I do think there was never a moment when I felt that we couldn't, you know, go to lunch together or we weren't going to say hi to each other in the hallway or that we couldn't work together on the next issue or the next piece of legislation or the next matter before this council. You certainly, I think, showed us what an important role the city council can have in the city of Boston. I want to thank you for your vocal and unabashed defense of this body when you were president and the membership here. I think that certainly made a difference for me as a new member in your years of experience. And I also want to thank you, although I don't know if it was meant as a, as a benefit at the time, but for assigning me as chair of the Committee on Civil Rights our first term. I think maintaining that committee and allowing us to really run with it and have the hearings that we wanted to have and working on the Boston Trust Act in that time was incredibly important. And, you know, I think it's made a real difference in the city of Boston. That wouldn't have been able to happen without that assignment from you when you were first council president, when I first came on. And like everyone else here, I expect to see more of you. I expect to see, have some good times, but also I know you have a lot more to contribute to the city of Boston and the people you've represented over the years. And, you know, entering four years of service here and compare it to 30, 30-plus, you know, I know you were a lot older than me, I didn't know how much older, but really congratulations and to your family as well, really congratulations. I've only been married a little less than a year, but I know how much now a burden this job can sometimes be on the family. And I know they've been with you every step of the way and we obviously can't do it without our support system at home. So congratulations and look forward to seeing more of you.
Thank you, Counselor Zake. Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I will honor your wishes and I'm reminded of Franklin Roosevelt who said, when addressing a room, you should be brief, be sincere, and be seated. So I will attempt to do that. I just wanted to say, Billy, I respect and admire your conviction, how resolute you are, how unflappable you are and steadfast in your principles and your beliefs. You are unapologetically parochial on behalf of your district. You have been tireless on behalf of those battling addiction and in the restoration of the Boston Cadet Program. Those are two legacies, you know, undeniably yours, you should certainly feel proud of. And I really appreciate that you've never been coy or nuanced about where you stand. You know, that says a lot about your integrity and that you are not afraid to be forthright about what you believe and I respect and admire that. I also just want to say that in all that grit and in all that toughness and all that conviction, that I do appreciate seeing when your eyes soften whenever you talk about your family. You have been a loving and faithful son and brother and husband and father. And I will miss your singing and it does remind me of our talent show together. And so I won't wish you luck, I'm going to wish you joy because I think that's much more filling and much more enduring. And in tribute to the song that we performed together, I will release you now so you can dance in the streets. Congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Mayor Flynn, January 20th, 1993. Report to room 708, you'll figure it out, I believe was the quote. Thank you very much. Billy, you're a great friend, you had an awesome career. Proud to be your friend. I'll see you on the first tee box.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I also want to thank Mayor Flynn for my first job. 1989. Actually, I'm sorry, it was the summer of 1990 at the Tobin Community Center as a peer leader. And I was in the Mayor's Youth Leadership Corps twice. I think they made me do it again. You know what, Bill? I think many people would make assumptions about you and I's relationship. And I think most people would be wrong, that we have had some really great times together. We have definitely not always been on the same side of issues, but I think we both came at it with the same passion and conviction. And I just simply want to, want to say, I want to thank you for, as young people would say, keeping it 100. You keep it real all the time. There are not surprises with you. I've never been blindsided by what you've put forward. And by the way, I've understood where you've come from. I want to thank you for, I want to thank your family for sharing you with us because when you're with us, you're not with them. And I think a lot of times, people don't understand what this job means, how all encompassing this job is, and to do it for as long as you've done it. And you don't have to be elected official to get constituency complaints for all of that time. I want to thank you for one vote in particular. I also want to thank Counsel Murphy and Counsel Lamatina, and we had discussions about this. I want to thank you for your vote on the Commission on the Status of Black and Latino Men. We live in a city where outcomes are not the same. And I want to thank you for stepping up on that issue and the unanimous vote that we were able to receive here. And I also want to thank you for taking me up on going to the Motown Show. And, you know, they basically said, hey, your name's Tito Jackson, come up and say, mm, no, no, no. But you got to go up and be the voice of the council. And I, I close with a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. that I think is appropriate. Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Bill, I want to thank you for warmly welcoming me to the council and I certainly appreciate the friendship we've been able to cultivate and develop over these last 22-plus months or so. I know, and I think we all know, I wasn't the person that you wanted here. That, that? That, I know. That, that's for the barking comment. But you still, you still took the time to teach me and to work with me and to talk to me about the work that lied ahead of me when, just before I became a city councilor and just after I took, took office. And I really appreciate the help that you've given me to get to the work that I do every day. You were once my city councilor and perhaps it was, it was all of that barking that helped you redistrict me into Frank's district.
Draw again, Billy.
And I wonder sometimes if, you know, you being a Southie kid, if I was just a little too Dorchester for you. But, but this Dorchester girl appreciates the friendship that we do have and all of the help that you've given me and the experience and the words of wisdom that you've been able to share with me. And please know that, you know, we'll have this Dorchester-Southie Beer Summit that we've talked about. And I so look forward to, not the frank conversation because you've had nothing but frank conversations with me all of this time, but I look forward to having that with you sort of off the clock and I just want to let you know how much I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Flahertys and the Linehans literally go back 100 years. Just starting to do the math here. So on behalf of the entire Flaherty family, my dad, of course, my, my mom and brother and sister, but the extended family, all the aunts, uncles, and cousins, with your entire family, your mom and dad, your grandparents, your brothers and sisters, they're all intertwined. I know that Ray Flynn is still here. I know there was that hotly contested race between the Flahertys and the Flynns back in the day. I think the Linehans helped put the Flahertys over the top, which then led to Ray coming to this body and the council and becoming the mayor of the city and then the ambassador. And then, round of applause for our, for our late, late Mayor Flynn right here for all that great work you've done. Really started with some of the political work and those relationships that grew to uncles and brothers all working together. So, so on behalf of the Flaherty family, just want to, with much love and appreciation and respect, we wish you the very best for your future endeavors and also for your entire family. On behalf of the South Boston delegation, that's Congressman Lynch, we had a meeting today, Congressman Lynch, former Senator Jackpot, current Senator, Linda Forney, state representative, Nick Collins, also former Senator Brian Wallace, all extend their best wishes as well. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Just, I'm watching the video, he's like a nut, he's all over the place. He's all over District 2 and it just goes to show that the work that you've done on behalf of our seniors, the work that you've done on behalf of our veterans, the work that you've done on behalf of our youth, not just, and I, I think you said a lot of, a lot of times, I think you were misunderstood. You know, it was referenced that, you know, some of your parochial passions, but you really sort of had a citywide perspective on just about everything because of your experiences, your personal experiences, your professional. You've seen the worst of Boston and you've seen the best of Boston. You've had those experiences and so you'd be able to bring that to the table anytime we met. And so whether you're sort of a young hard charger or sort of more on the season side, you always sort of had, you sort of had that sort of sage advice and wisdom around because you've either seen it before or you've seen someone else do it before. But it was that type of experience that everyone was able to sort of draw from you in elective office. And that's, I speak for the entire delegation when I, when I speak of that. And also from our own community, the neighborhood that you love so much and the neighborhood that loves you so much, the work that you've put in through your entire life, not just your career in public service, but not just you, but the entire Linehan family and what they mean to South Boston and how much South Boston appreciates all of the Linehans. You're just one component of a larger process and you're blessed to have that family with you, your immediate family, your extended family. But if you go up and down all the streets of the neighborhoods, there's a Linehan living just about somewhere. And if they're not a Linehan, they married a Linehan. Or if they're not a married, they're related to a Linehan. So, and that's a big part of sort of who you are in that sense of community which you bring here. And you represent the entire district. You're loved and revered in Chinatown and Bay Village and the South End for your work ethic, for your commitment, for your passion, for your experience, and for the fact that you woke up every day looking to, like we all do, looking forward to helping people. And that's a big part of this job. And so our hope is that you get sort of your just reward and allow you to spend more time with your family. I want to thank the Linehan family for giving you to us and for giving you to the city of Boston, not just for your service to South Boston and to District 2, but for every nook and cranny of this great city we call, we call Boston. And then finally, recognizing obviously that we've got this collective and shared experience here as elected leaders to know that you always, you always knew where you stood. And if you were with you, you could commit to someone, look them right in the eye and your handshake meant something. If you weren't with them, it was pretty straightforward. And you weren't afraid of criticism. This body quite frankly has benefited from you not fearing criticism. That's part of the job. Former city councilor John Tobin used to say, sort of, you know, groans and grunts and boos, kind of like hugs in our business, right? No one's really had the opportunity to say thank you for the work you've done on this body as a District 2 city council, but also as our council president, taking some of those punches on behalf of this body. So I just want to say on behalf of everyone, we're grateful for that service. We continue to look for you and to lean on you for that type of experience that you have in as you start this new chapter. Again, from the Flahertys, we love you, we thank you, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty.
Bill, I reserve for myself the privilege of giving the last words because I count myself extremely lucky to have caught the tail end of your 43 years in public service to the city. I knew you first as my district city councilor when I was still living in the South End and then later benefited as a colleague and I now say family friend. Have so enjoyed getting to know Judy and all the kids and seeing them and how much of you comes from, the love that they give you is so evident every time I get to speak with them and every time that you all are together. You know, some of the words that I was thinking of that kind of capture your approach and your service have already been thrown out and reinforced many times. Steadfast, principled, family-focused. I want to add one more to that list, which is impact. You have presided over and you have led discussions for this city over some of the most complicated, contentious, and heated issues that Boston has had to confront in our modern history. Conversations about redistricting, about the Olympics, about development in this current boom for Boston, what that means for neighborhoods, for, for the economics of it all. You've always been fair in those conversations. You've always been upfront. And I think we've all benefited from your focus on the recovery community and what we could be doing, taking every possible step as a city to address this crisis that frankly we don't talk about or, or notice often enough. And we'll make sure to carry on those legacies that you have started. In my role as council president now, I just, you know, people say to you about being a parent, you never quite know until you're there. It's the same thing about council president, you never quite know until you're there how much work I know now that you put into meeting with each and every member of central staff, to understanding the role, understanding all of the pieces that are completely behind the scenes and under the radar to running this institution and protecting it, uplifting the reputation of the council and defending the work that we do in this chamber, in our offices across the city every single day. I know now how much you put into that and how much we have benefited from your advocacy, quiet and mostly behind the scenes on that front. You have been transparent always. You have been, you've always made time. And I think similar to Matt, some of, some of my favorite moments are just in those kind of casual conversations that we happen to have. Often it was because I didn't have a car and so as your constituent, I don't know if you were trying to earn my vote or what, you would drop me off at my house or you would give me a ride from this event to back to City Hall or sometimes just kind of catching up in the hallway. And in those moments, you know, the, the roles that you play, the roles that I think you, that I would guess that you hold most important in your, how you think of yourself, really come to the forefront. You being a dad, you being a husband, you being a public servant. And I still, you know, I can remember different conversations... know, I can remember different conversations we've had, driving around the city, or sitting in City Hall, past Copley Square, and you were talking, telling me about what it's like to be a parent, and that time you took Brooke to a Parks Department event in Copley Square. Or by Franklin Park, and how you used to bike to Franklin Park from the neighborhood when you were younger, and what that meant to cross the city, and all the work that you had put in directly to making sure Franklin Park was accessible and valued for kids of all backgrounds across the city. As a runner, you have a passion for, not just running for office, but running and being out in the neighborhoods, hearing, again, like Matt, how you have seen the seaport and the South Boston waterfront change from your times, just, you know, growing up and as a young man, running there, and continuing to do that now, and all of that, again, tracing back to your leadership and your impact on development in this city, and how it has shaped neighborhoods. I hope that, my wish is that we will see you often, that you will continue to traverse the city on, you know, running and staying fit, but also driving around. Hopefully, you might, when you're in the private sector, have a different approach to your car. I always tease Bill about his vehicle. Maybe you can consider getting an electric vehicle. We'll work on that. And that, I just want to, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. You have shaped me forever in terms of how I think about politics, about public service, about people, and I know I'm not, I'm far from the only one who can say that. So, thank you, Bill. And now, it's my honor to present former council president, Bill Lenihan, with, as tradition, the Crystal Gavel that we give to departing council presidents. So, if you could please join me up here.
I hope that you're as hungry as I am. Okay, sure.
So, we've reached the end of our meeting. I'm going to ask President Lenihan to stay up here with me, so that he can gavel-close his last meeting. And if everyone could please remain standing, we'd like to ask all guests and members to observe this meeting in memoriam, and we will adjourn in memory of these individuals. For Counsel Campbell, Ella Everett. For Counsel Siomo, Carol Ann Mark. Michael T. Michael. John B. McNamara. Pauline L. O'Connor. Benedetto Persakini. For Counsel Sabi George, Donna Marie Fitzgerald. Joyce Neko. For Counsel Flaherty, John Albertson. For Counsel LaMatina, James F. Jimmy Gallagher. Richard Ritchie Giovaniello. Eileen A. Locke. Joseph J. Picardi. For Counselors LaMatina, Flaherty, and Lenihan, Carl Sutera. For Counsel O'Malley, Robert F. Clark. Donald Flynn. Gary Greenwood. Margaret Jean Kaiser. Nancy Ryan. And John T. Sweeney. For Counselors Sabi George and Presley, Bertram Elaine. For Counselors Zakeham, Irving P. Stallings. For Counselors McCarthy and O'Malley, Kathleen Keough, Mother Martique. And for Counselors Sabi George, Flaherty, and Lenihan, Billy Joe Ryan. A moment of silence, please. Thank you.
The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so, oh, we already did that part, right? Oh, yeah.
He's a little rusty.
I am rusty. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, at noon, in the Ayinella Chamber of the Boston City Council. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you.
[applause][1708.57]